Good morning. We are going to get started with the Board of County Commissioners' work session at seven forty seven before, Rangelay, Colorado. This today is February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three, and we are starting at seven forty-five. Work sessions are intended to provide opportunities for the commissioners to study difficult issues, gather and analyze information, clarify problems, or give staff direction. No official decisions will be made. Work sessions are on a floating docket. The schedule is provided for informational purposes only. Sessions will normally be considered in the order in which they appear on this schedule. However, all times are approximate and may begin at the commissioner's discretion. Additionally, the board may alter the schedule, take breaks during the meeting, or continue an item for a future work session date. So we will be starting with facilities, air cockheads, Meeker Airport, hangar and ground.
Okay, so today I'd like to review the proposed new build ground lease for Hangers West LLC. This is our first new build ground lease at the airport. And well, in my tenure with the county, and then I believe it's probably our first new build within the last twenty years. So this is a new process that we're going through. I wanted to review the proposed ground lease, discuss the details of that, and then, of course, what happens after we approve the ground lease. So what you have in front of you, this is from the sketch, the first sheet of this sketch is from our TO Engineering. I had them, once the ground lease was submitted to me, I had them do a a plot of what land would need to be included in the ground lease. The ground lease is based off of the square footage that the leaser or the leasing would need to construct the building, what is required with offsets, and then, of course, any other additional systems like, for example, the lease leasing is in there has mentioned that they might want to be able to put in a septic system, and so they would need additional ground with that. So this would be the square footage of of the ground lease that they're requesting out at the airport. They're looking at constructing, and so if you go to the backside of page two, you see the the position that they're looking at putting the building on. So they're looking at constructing a four hundred by one hundred and twenty-five steel building for hangers. I think the intent of the of the structure is that they're going to use one hangar for themselves and then lease out the other two hangar areas. What you're looking at on that map, the big circle area is a delineation for what is our ASOS system. So that is the weather system for the airport reporting. That line is important because if we were to allow construction for a physical structure above ground past that line, we would need to look at planning for relocating the ASOS system. Now, not to get too far off of what we're reviewing here, we have talked to the FAA on potentially relocating the ASOS system to allow for additional developers to come in and build. There is a waiver procedure that we can go through with the FAA. Discussing that with TO Engineering, they recommend that we go ahead and start that waiver program with the FAA so that if in the next year, two years, another developer wants to come in and build, we've already we've already gotten that approval. And then, of course, with that ASOS relocation, we'd need to reflect that in our county or in our airport CIP plan with the FAA. And so they're fully aware of kind of what discussions are on that so that we can open that up. They'd be willing to work with us, and then we would look at reflecting that project within within our CIP plan.
What's the cost on that?
Ballpark right now, five hundred thousand to do the relocation of the ASOS, and because this would be an FAA CIP, that would be a ninety percent FAA, five percent CDOT, and five percent county for that project.
And would that go against the other projects that we have marked?
It it would potentially be in in not, I wouldn't say conflict, but, you know, we would have to show those funds and distributing within that CIP plan, yes.
We have to move those entitlement monies around.
To fund it.
Yeah.
My my thing would be is we would we would look at seeing what their requirements for relocating that ASOS is, what the time period would be. Ideal where that would kind of come into play is that twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight period. That would not be in any competition with our current CIP planning that we've proposed with the FAA today. But that might mean that we need some additional funding on their side to make that happen. So, you know, those are things we would need to discuss.
Will it impact, oh, sorry. Will it impact the relocation of the taxiway here for the apron? I think those were our most pressing projects.
It I don't think it would impact the apron. And then if we show that we're planning on doing that ASOS relocation after the twenty twenty-six, because that's when we've planned to do the taxiway relocation, it would not show in our plan that it's conflicting with those. Now, in that waiver, they may come back and say, hey, to receive this waiver, we would like to see the ASOS relocated within two or three years of that construction of that that structure there. And and then that would come into play, right? If if that structure was being built this year and they wanted to see it done within three years, then that would that would come in, that would create the ASOS relocation as as being in competition with some of our other plans.
Did you ask them what that costs to relocate the ASOS?
As five hundred thousand.
What is ASOS?
A new, basically, it's our weather station out there. They have AWAS, which is a weather station here at Rangelay. It's managed through our own. ASOS is managed by the NOAA, I believe, or the Federal Weather Station. Their National Weather.
National Weather Station.
Why don't you just move on to the weather station?
But ninety percent would be FAA, five percent CDOT, five percent county.
So we're down to twenty-five hundred thousand.
Yeah.
As long as we have enough entitlement funds to make that match pop.
But that's what I'm concerned about, is it impacting the ability on these other pressing projects that we've already kicked down the road for however many years. You still have to get the ninety percent match.
I mean, it looks like he's going to have four hangers here, right?
So, yeah, so this development doesn't impact at all. But what that is, is looking at making sure that that we have potentially covered our basis for anyone else that wants to develop out there.
Yes. But he's leasing three out of those four, correct? Or his plan is to?
It it appears from the the lease, the proposed lease, that that is that is their intent is to potentially done. Now, I haven't confirmed that.
It isn't understanding.
Yeah, that that's what they've relayed to me through communication is they're going to build three, build what they can, lease out what they don't use, and then and then use the one hangar for their own for their own storage.
So did they, do you know if they already have somebody that wants to lease those?
I do not.
They do?
I don't, I don't.
I he, there is some possibilities right now, like real strong possibilities. I don't think I'm very given the names yet, but they were, they were, when I talked to the builder last week, there was a couple of interests Eric and I have talked about about a year ago. And then now that friends lives coming in and wanting to do this, then they're instead of building a hangar, they're gonna lease through.
Yeah, so I guess where I'm trying to get at is how important is it that we move that that system? And is there going, is there going to be enough demand to build another hangar to to justify moving that and potentially bumping out our other projects another year or two, five down the road?
So discussing this with our our airport engineer, you know, his recommendation was if you get this, if you get this ball started and and then it's it's moving along, and then another developer comes in, then we've already, we've already gotten it initiated so that, you know, because with the federal government, the paperwork takes a long time. Now, if we get that ball rolling and the waiver happens and then no one develops in it, then nothing happens with with the relocation of the ASOS.
We're not forced to do it, Dan.
Yeah, we're not forced to do it.
They're not going to give us three years, and then we have to do it.
Yeah, yeah. They now, now with that being said, they would like to see us, you know, once this kind of this conversation, I brought this up to the FAA, they started looking at, and they're like, this this weather station is is getting too into life anyways. This kind of brings up a new thing, hey, guys, we'd really like to start seeing this on your on your CIP planning. And so that's where, you know, we could, we could start being proactive too on that and saying, hey, look. Because, you know, basically, on our CIP planning, there's not much happening after twenty twenty-six. We we have a potential runway rehabilitation asphalt project that we've slated for twenty thirty at the Rangelay Airport. But there's nothing really in that gap. And what we were using that gap to do was to help build up our entitlement funds to help pay for that runway, because that's going to be a big eight million dollar project, right? And so there's really nothing happening in there, but it might be something that we potentially start start looking at and and putting it out there. And then basically, anything out of the five years, we're allowed to adjust and and do that type of stuff without it really affecting how the FAA does fund.
So by starting the process, it doesn't bind us to anything. All it does is sets us up for if and when we're ready to to move on it. If next year, somebody comes back and wants to build a hangar in that in that space, we're already set to to move the AWAS.
Yeah, and we've already started the paperwork process with the FAA, and we we have a good idea of going, okay, this is what, you know, to that developer, we've answered all the questions, you know. So if that developer comes in and say, I would like to build some more buildings, you say, hey, you know, this is, this is the size of building that that basically is covered under that and that we're allowed to develop up there.
And I do know, I could talk to the the builder last week that this building that they're currently designing, it's it's going to be designed to add on. So that's just to kind of give you a heads up.
So so this being the the first process, kind of reviewing what we've done in the in the ground lease. So we we've had a number, we've had a revise of our ground leases out at the airport, but we really didn't have any structure within those ground leases for new build. And what we wanted to do was make sure that with the leasing of the ground, because that's that's what we're looking at proving is approving this ground lease so then they can start the process of permitting and and design, and they actually have something solid like, hey, I have the right to build on this ground now. We wrote in some some requirements for conceptual planning. And so the next page, of course, is the letter of intent required by the conceptual planning, you know. What are they actually planning on building? What are they going to use it for? Those type of things. And and you can see they're looking at building a four hundred by twenty-five steel hangar that allows them to have the different bays for the hangers. They don't look at doing any type of things right now that would kick them into like at, you know, it's not developing as a commercial property, it's it's aircraft hangar. So they're not looking at working out the aircrafts, not look at housing a business there right now. So right now, it's just strictly aircraft storage. They've included a preliminary design of the building that shows that it has, you know, four bays for aircraft storage. We have markups on this lease agreement. I, we received the the formal lease backed from from Hangers West on the twenty-second of February. And soon as I got it, I kicked it over to TO Engineering, our airport engineer and planning. And then I also sent it to our county attorney for review. Those are some of the comments that the TO engineer has, you know, commented on that we might want to address, and these comments are now are being reviewed by Dawn, our county attorney.
And Dawn is on the phone if you need him for anything.
And then the last, the last piece of that was I included a printout of an email because within the letter of intent, I wanted to make sure that the fire district was basically in there that they've seen the conceptual plan, they're aware of the project, and and they don't take any objections to the project. And so within that email that was sent over to me last week, basically Luke says that the the fire board is okay with moving forward with the project. However, they stated a stipulation that they they would not sign off on issuing a CO with the building until our fire flow waterline expansion project was done at the airport, which makes a lot of sense, because that's been everybody's concern. You know, would would we have the fire flow to protect these structures if something happens?
I think what he told me last week was this project, given that fact of the waterline not maybe even starting until midsummer, they're probably not going to start to build until right around October.
The, and then, of course, kind of including in this, not to take too much of someone else's time. So I've I've issued out a proposed easement with a property owner that would work for the waterline expansion. Part of that easement is that they have talked about doing a potential trade with an easement on the airport property. I sent that over to the FAA for review, and then I included a that email from the response from the FAA. So there's, there's going to be some some legwork that we have to do in response for the FAA to 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 approve that that lease exchange. And so I've sent this over to Dawn. We'll, we'll review it and and be strategic on how we we submit that back to the FAA. They would like to have an easement along the west property line of our airport that would connect their property to the town ditch. So that would allow them to potentially do irrigation line.
Would that going to be a permanent?
I would say that it would be as long as we have an easement on their property, they have an easement on our property. So there's, there's some, you can see in there, there's some hit list of some things that I need to address with the FAA to make that that go through, and that is a critical component to the waterline expansion project.
Do they have the young water rights out of that ditch?
They do not, the property owner does not. However,
They just want access to it in case they can obtain water rights?
That right now is the is is what I get from the property owner.
So who is Town Ditch? Who's that on with?
Smith.
It is Smith?
They have the majority of the water rights out of them. There's other people that have, but they have the majority.
I'm reviewing with our county attorney. We may have water rights to the town ditch based on the acquisition of the Jocelyn property that
Oh, yeah.
is connected to Highway thirteen that we used for the water, the outfall project.
If not, they just have to go back and ask for them.
Yeah.
Oh, how did we determine seventeen cents per?
That was something different, didn't it, Lanny?
That was, basically, they had done a lot of different studies. I think Lanny had looked at those things. It's not, I think it's almost the same as what we have been charging. Want to say that Gersfield, Cal, or rifle airport is about that same amount, I think.
So I I was not a part of the seventeen cents, but you can see that our comment from our engineer is that we should reach out to CDOT. They may have a a updated study on what the the appropriate rate is for.
That would it be something we want to look at, or has it just been done, or what's?
Well, we can renegotiate these every five years, right? And we just did it a year.
A year ago, that's for the existing building, yeah. So the new one falls under a different
So if we
Thing, a different.
So if we look at a new rate for this building, but it wouldn't be applicable to the ones that already have.
Existing contracts.
Right, just say.
Until they're built after that.
That's another thing that the engineer thought is we're we're going too long on the five years. The things increase a lot sooner than five years.
Instead of going five years, maybe two, three.
It would make sense to me if we're already behind the ball low, we might not want to kick it out clear of the five years to and put us even farther behind.
That is, I think our our engineer has a lot of good comments in here, and that's what I I discussed with Dawn yesterday, and that's why we looked at scheduling this lease agreement for approval on the March fourteenth board meeting. And so we want to make sure we address each one of these comments, because I think they're, you know, they they're very helpful in in doing this.
So the process there is we have a work session before the meeting and discuss all these things? Or should we have that worked out before the meeting?
If you would like me to do a follow-up and and review this, I think, I think that's always helpful. I I like being able to go through these documentations in a in a work session, you know, when we have the final documents, so we all know what we're agreeing to. That's a little tough to do within the within the the board meeting. And so, you know, absolutely, we could do a work session and and take twenty minutes and and go through this and and see what the the final before it's put in front of the board for final approval.
And with that, we could, we could see what other airports do for time and money and.
Yeah, I can definitely provide that. Okay. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. We, it's eight oh seven, we don't have another one until eight fifteen unless Sharon, are you? Sharon Clapper for MCCI Board, are you on the phone? We will take a reset.
Thanks, Eric. Thanks, Karen.
And that's one reason I would like to keep attending the board meetings and have a voice on that.
Sharon, do you have any, uh? Issues or plans, or or how do you foresee the? The board forming and what they, what you would like to see happen?
Well, I would like, um, just, I I put together the committee, the twelve people, and presented it to, um, the board. And I would like out of that for the commissioners to be able to find five people. To appoint to the board. I would basically like to be like the sixth person. That that has a voice in it until we get the lease agreement figured out and and get things running smoothly. And then I would certainly be willing to back off and be available for anything that the board might need of me. But I don't want to long term stay on the board.
What's long term?
Um, I don't want in years, you know, on it. I I want to be able to stay. Until we've got this whole thing worked out, where everybody's on the same page about how Fairfield Apartments are moving forward with the commissioners.
So one of the problems is we can't do six positions because it's an even number in, uh.
Correct.
So, uh, and and, uh. There is, uh, one term that is done in twenty-three. Is that kind of along the lines that you're thinking?
Probably.
The term would expire twelve of twenty-three.
I think that. Twenty-third, probably.
January twenty-fourth.
That would probably be fine if if I, uh, yes, that that would work if you wanted to point me to the board. I don't have any problem with that. I just, like I say, I just need to see this through. And however, you guys are in charge of this board and appointing it and whatever works. But I definitely would like to be, if that's the way it needs to work, I would absolutely apply for that position.
Okay. Okay.
No more questions? All right. Do you have any questions for us, Sharon?
I don't. No, I'm I'm pretty comfortable with where we are, and I I not kind of know kind of where we are as far as I'm concerned with our apartments and. And with you guys, you know, with the commissioners. Uh, just to be able to move forward and make things work that makes most of us happy.
Is is, uh, how's how's the, uh? Rest of the people down there, are they, uh? Okay, are they nervous? What's the, uh?
I haven't, I haven't, um, advertised at all that what's going on. There are several of them here that know. But I have not put it out to the tenants that there's even been a problem, because I didn't want to have that backlash going on right now to be overwhelmed with. With, uh, what's going on, what's going on, you know, I don't want to spend my whole time trying to, uh, a lot of them here don't know, or if they do, I don't feel like they're very concerned about it. And, uh, I have been approached by several that are thanking me, you know, to work kind of for them. And get where we all want to be.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. We will be making, um, the decisions today during our Board of County Commissioner, um, meeting at eleven o'clock, okay?
Then you're welcome to. You're welcome listening on that if you want to.
Hi, this is Jess.
Do I just call back in on the same number?
I'm sorry, what?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
We're finishing up.
Yes. At eleven o'clock then, if I just call back, I can hear what's going, I'll be able to hear what you're saying.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And then I need to put my phone on mute, you said, correct?
Stay on the phone.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Sharon. Have a good day.
You too. Bye bye.
All right, so it sounds like we have Jess Franks on the phone?
Yes.
All right. Um, so we are moving on to, um, the Planning Commission with Jess Franks, um, doing an interview. Um. So, to get started, um, Jess, give me a little bit of background and understanding of of wanting to to be on this board. Or to continue to be in on this board.
Okay, um, so in my opinion, being on the Planning Commission is about caring and being passionate about the community and the county that we live in. Um, Matt and I have been here for over three years, and we've chosen to make this our home. I think the group of people that we have on the Planning Commission right now is a very diverse group who fits that. Everyone. I don't think anyone would be on it if they didn't care about the community, if they weren't passionate about the community. Um, you know, everybody comes from different backgrounds. We all have different jobs, different life experiences. And I would like to think that a good board has diversity, and I would like to think that I contribute and add to that diversity.
Perfect, thank you.
Jess, it always comes up, and we need to talk about it. Is there going to be a conflict of interest? Do you think there's a conflict of interest? I've been asked about it. Can you address that?
A conflict of interest regarding?
Regarding your husband being the building inspector.
Um, personally, I don't think there is. Um, I think, again, it's just about specifically me caring.
Where it could potentially be a conflict of interest. Um, at that point, I mean, has that happened? Because you've already been on the board. One, that's one question I have, and the other one is, how would you handle it if there did become a conflict of interest on an issue?
Um, so the past six months that I've been on it, I I feel like there was a lot of topics that there. There wasn't, there was no conflict of interest. Um, I would say if there is something in the future that comes like up like that, that. If need be, I could recuse myself from, you know, maybe the topic or the situation, or. Um, I know that has happened once before, um, on a topic that we discussed, you know, somebody recused themselves from that topic. So I would think that would be the way to handle it, but that's just my opinion on that.
Perfect, thank you.
We have a small community, and that happens in all kinds of stuff, but I I just felt we need to get that on the record so that people understand that we do know and we care and we're doing what we can.
I agree. I I've been asked about that as well, so I think that's a valid question.
Of course, yes.
Um, so is there, on the Planning Commission, is there anything that you would like to see done differently? Is it running okay? Is it, uh? Uh. Well, of course, we need more representation from the Rangelian, but what? What? Is there any hiccups that we need to address or that you guys can address? What what's the, uh? Future?
Um, so first of all, this is all new to me. Um, I didn't know what to expect. I I really had no idea what I was walking into. Um, I think, again, the last six months, at least for me, things went well. It was a learning process. So again, it's all new to me. Um, we had things come across that, to me, seemed straightforward, nothing crazy, which allowed me to get familiarized with the process. How things are done, you know, researching topics, getting familiar with the L U R, things like that. So, again, I'm new to this. It, to me, everything worked fine. I can't think of anything that would have helped me. Better learn this process. I I think it went smooth for me. Um, of course, there's always room for growth, and going forward, there might be changes that I see, or hey, you know, this would be helpful for me. But the last six months for me were just getting familiarized, and everything that happened. In the way it was done was good for me. It was a good learning process, and things were done in a way that helped me learn.
And you and you feel confident that if there was something that you didn't feel was right, that you would be able to speak up and and contribute?
I do, I do. Now, that's, again, it's a learning thing. It's, speaking in front of people isn't easy to me, but I think, you know, if I'm passionate about something, if I truly believe in something, then yes, I. I would feel comfortable to be able to go and voice my opinion.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great.
We will be making decisions on this, um, appointing people on, um, our C O C C meeting at eleven o'clock today.
All right, that sounds great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too. Bye.
Bye.
Morning, Roger.
Good morning.
How are you?
All right. How are you guys doing?
You want to come up here? You're next, mister.
Right on time.
All right, we're moving on to another Planning Commission, um, position with Roger Polley. Good morning.
Good morning.
So, um, just give me a little bit of background understanding of why you're wanting to be on this committee.
Uh, well, I was approached by several people in, uh, town and the county that thought that I would be a good fit. For whatever reason, um, I would like to be on there so that I can give my two cents on. What the history on that I know on this end of the county and where where I think we could. Uh, affect things to help with, uh, the economy. Uh, Rangelie and, uh, Rio Blanco County in general, um, so that we can. Provide guidance to whatever developments or whatever. You know, whatever things that are coming through the board so that we can provide the board with, uh, guidance on what we think ought to happen. Um, that's that's really it. Like to see, uh, I'd like to see the county, uh, be as self-sufficient and. Uh, economically viable as possible. Um, uh, and a little, you know, a little bit of growth and whatever I can do to help with that.
Thank you for stepping up. We appreciate it.
Sure.
For her time. About a kind of a weird question I'd like to ask you.
Sure.
What do you think about the government as an overall?
Um, so I'm not a, I I'm I'm. Uh, I think government overall. Uh, I, uh, I am, uh, I believe in the founding fathers thought process that. Government should be limited in as many aspects as possible. Um, from the, especially the federal government should be limited in as many aspects as possible, and that ought to. Flow down to the state and county level, um, town, township, city level. When at all possible, leave government out of it. Um, if if possible. Uh, government has to be there, uh, to circumvent all of the problems that are associated with individuals. And corporations that 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 vie against one another, so you have to have. Uh, policing at every kind of level, but, um. I I I believe that, uh, government is generally affected by. Uh, money and corporations that that try to get their will pushed. And, um, government has to be there to kind of equilibrium the individual rights versus, uh, those of big, big corporations. Unfortunately, government has almost become hand in hand with. Companies and corporations in my view anymore, and they they back and forth on one another and kind of leaves the individual as a second-class thought. And so i- if at all possible, keeping government out of. Things that they don't have to be involved in, and that they don't have to be involved, um, in every last little aspect of everybody's. Businesses and personal stuff. It just don't have to be.
The less government, the better.
The less government, the better. Generally, markets, capitalism will will even out things. Um, for the better in the long run, um, versus, um. Bureaucrats who think they're trying to do the best thing, but it's generally the best thing for a specific group of people right now. Not the best thing for the long, the long haul. And I think the long haul can be taken care of by capitalism and freedom less. Versus the, oh, well, we made that law forty years ago, and now it has no effect.
Very good, really good. I'm glad to hear your thoughts. Are you familiar with the Planning Commission at all?
Uh.
Is there anything that you? Want to change or want to change, or?
Uh, generally, no. I am not very familiar with, uh, the Planning Commission. I mean, I know, I know it exists. Um, uh, in my mind, it would be a body of individuals that are, um. Willing to, willing and able to take the time to put their two cents into whatever's, whatever's being brought to them, and it's, uh, obviously a function. Of what needs to happen at the county level, because I don't believe the commissioners can, you know, there's only so much time in a day to to address so many projects. So it's, um, in my view, it's something that is, um, is needed because you need. People from the outside of the government bureaucracy to actually affect how the government's going to work. Um, otherwise, the bureaucracy has a tendency to be self-serving and, um.
Be caring.
Where it could potentially be a conflict of interest. Um, at that point, I mean, has that happened because you've already been on the board? One, that's one question I have. And the other one is how would you handle it if there did become a conflict of interest on an issue?
Um, so the past six months that I've been on it, I, I feel like there was a lot of topics that there, there wasn't, there was no conflict of interest. Um, I would say if there is something in the future that comes like up like that, that i- if need be, I could recuse myself from, you know, maybe the topic or the situation or, um, I know that had to happen once before. Um, on a topic that we discussed, you know, somebody recused themselves from that topic. So I would think that would be the way to handle it, but that's just my opinion on that.
Perfect. Thank you.
We have a small community and that happens and all kinds of stuff. But I, I just felt we need to get that on the record so that people understand that we do know and we care and we're doing what we can.
I agree. I've been asked about that as well. So I think that's a valid question.
Yeah, of course. Yes.
Um, so is there, on the planning commission, is there anything that you would like to see done differently? Is it running? Okay. Is it, uh, uh, well, of course, we need more representation from the Rangelian, but what, what, is there any hiccups that we need to address or that you guys can address? What, what's the, uh, future?
Um, so first of all, this is all new to me. Um, I didn't know what to expect. I, I really had no idea what I was walking into. Um, I think again, the last six months, at least for me, things went well. It was a learning process. So again, it's all new to me. Um, we had things come across that to me seemed straightforward, nothing crazy, which allowed me to get familiarized with the process, how things are done, you know, researching topics, getting familiar with the L U R, things like that. So again, I'm new to this. It, to me, everything worked fine. I can't think of anything that would have helped me better learn this process. I, I think it went smooth for me. Um, of course, there's always room for growth and going forward, there might be changes that I see or hey, you know, this would be helpful for me. But the last six months for me were just getting familiarized and everything that happened in the way it was done was good for me. It was a good learning process and things were done in a way that helped me learn.
And you, and you feel confident that if there was something that you didn't feel was right, that you would be able to speak up and, and contribute?
I do, I do. Now that's again, it's a learning thing. It's, speaking in front of people isn't easy to me, but I think, you know, if I'm passionate about something, if I truly believe in something, then yes, I, I would feel comfortable to be able to go and voice my opinion.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great.
We will be making decisions on this, um, appointing people on, um, our C O C C meeting at 11 o'clock today.
All right. That sounds great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too. Bye.
Bye.
Morning, Roger.
Good morning.
How are you?
All right. How are you guys doing?
You want to come up here? You're next, mister.
Right on time.
All right, we're moving on to another planning commission, um, position with Roger Polley. Good morning.
Good morning.
So, um, just give me a little bit of background understanding of why you're wanting to be on this committee.
Uh, well, I was approached by several people in, uh, town and the county that thought that I would be a good fit. For whatever reason, um, I would like to be on there so that I can give my two cents on what the history on, that I know on this end of the county and where, where I think we could uh, affect things to help with, uh, the economy. Yeah, Rangelie and, uh, Rio Blanco County in general, um, so that we can provide guidance to whatever developments or whatever, you know, whatever things that are coming through the board so that we can provide the board with, uh, guidance on what we think ought to happen. Um, that's, that's really it. Like to see, uh, I'd like to see the county, uh, be as self-sufficient and uh, economically viable as possible. Um, uh, and a little, you know, a little bit of growth and whatever I can do to help with that.
Well, thank you for stepping up. We appreciate it.
Sure.
For your time. About a kind of a weird question I'd like to ask you.
Sure.
What do you think about the government as an overall?
Um, so I'm not a, I, I'm, I'm, uh, I think government overall. Uh, I, uh, I am, uh, I believe in the founding fathers thought process that government should be limited in as many aspects as possible. Um, from the, especially the federal government should be limited in as many aspects as possible. And that ought to flow down to the state and county level, um, town, township, city level. When at all possible, leave government out of it, um, if, if possible. Uh, government has to be there, uh, to circumvent all of the problems that are, are associated with individuals and corporations that, that, that vie against one another. So you have to have uh, policing at every kind of level, but, um, I, I, I believe that, uh, government is generally affected by, uh, money and corporations that, that try to get their will pushed. And, um, government has to be there to kind of equilibrium the individual rights versus, uh, those of big, big corporations. Unfortunately, government has almost become hand in hand with companies and corporations in my view anymore. And they, they back and forth on one another and kind of leaves the individual as a second class thought. And so i- i- if at all possible, keeping government out of things that they don't have to be involved in. And they, they don't have to be involved, um, in every last little aspect of everybody's businesses and personal stuff. It just don't have to be.
The less government, the better.
The less government, the better. Generally markets, capitalism will, will even out things um, for the better in the long run, um, versus, um, bureaucrats who think they're trying to do the best thing, but it's generally the best thing for a specific group of people right now. Not the best thing for the long, the long haul. And I think the long haul can be taken care of by capitalism and freedom less versus the, oh, well, we made that law 40 years ago and now it has no effect.
Very good. Really good. I, I'm glad to hear your thoughts. Are you familiar with the planning commission at all?
Uh,
Is there anything that you want to change or want to change or?
Uh, generally, no, I am not very familiar with, uh, the planning commission. I mean, I know, I know it exists. Um, uh, in my mind, it would be a body of individuals that are, um, willing to, willing and able to take the time to put their two cents into whatever's, whatever's being brought to them. And it's a, obviously a function of what needs to happen at the county level because I don't believe the commissioners can, you know, there's only so much time in a day to, to address so many projects. So it's, um, in my view, it's something that is, um, is needed because you need people from the outside of the government bureaucracy to actually affect how the government's going to work. Um, otherwise the bureaucracy has a tendency to be self-serving. And, um, so I don't know exactly how it operates or I haven't really, uh, I actually got, got talked kind of into this in the last few weeks and I haven't done a lot of, um, a lot of research of exactly how it operates, but that's generally what it, what, you know, it's offering, I would imagine plans and, um, developments and things that are brought to the county. Um, an overview of how those are going to go and then brought to the commissioners with opinions on how they should go. And.
We really appreciate you stepping up. I think you would be a really good asset.
I hope so.
No. Yeah, I just want to echo that. Thank you for your willingness to serve on this. I had one question about personal property rights, but I think you pretty much answered it in your response to Doug's question. Don't think we need to beat that, uh, that horse anymore, but maybe after, after the fact, uh, we should have a conversation about other boards.
Do more opening drives.
Right, right. Well, I was told that this one doesn't meet a lot, quote unquote. So, uh, yes, I hope that is true. And maybe someday, uh, you know, down, way down the road, I'll have more time to, to, uh, he- head towards community things like this, but at this point, uh, I'm pretty well held to one, one little thing I can be on to, to be able to spread myself not too thin.
Give Gabe more. Just give Gabe more and then you.
Oh, I'm gonna, he's, I'm shoveling in his direction.
Any other questions?
I don't have any.
No, I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your thing.
We appreciate it.
All right.
We'll be making our decisions at 11 o'clock today.
Okay. Thank you.
Have a good one, Roger. Is Kelly coming here or is she on?
Yes, she will be coming.
Okay. So we are waiting for Kelly Hendrickson, White River Douglas Creek Conservation District. So we will go on recess.
You don't have a lot of time because we've got a full agenda.
I was hoping you'd skip over us and go to somebody else.
No.
All right, so we are going to get started back up. It is nine.
You don't have a lot of time because we've got a full agenda.
I was hoping you'd skip over it and go to somebody else.
No.
All right, so we are going to get started back up. It is 9:15 with White River Douglas Creek Conservation District, Kelly Hendrickson.
My apologies, but there was a blizzard between here and Meeker. I'll see you.
Mr. Mark, they're starting with this.
He's getting that America.
I say, come in here.
He's got other things on his heart.
I think so.
Okay, so we just wanted to review the land use plan, or not the land use plan, but our MOU regarding the land use plan. Since it has been looked at a couple of times. Ty, I don't remember if it's been, since you've been on the board, if we've even looked at it.
The MOU?
Yeah. Okay.
We just said the land use plan.
Okay. Well, time as we look at this. So we need to update it, but at least for one thing is, if nothing else, for the fact that it's got an update that we finalized this in '22. So we should update it for that. I want the board members to talk about it a little bit. So you do have Rosa Lee from the Douglas Creek Conservation District Board, and Scott Robertson, also from Douglas Creek, and Mark Etchar will be here shortly from the White River District. And I want them to talk a little bit about it. But just as we, I think, do you guys have a copy? Yes, do you have a copy of it? One thing is looking at the topics that we, the way it's worded is that the county will do focus on, take the lead, as it's said, on noxious weeds and basic species, oil and gas, travel management, wildlife, wildfire, and community wildfire planning. The district will take the lead on forest management, livestock grazing, and wild horses. And then together, we'll jointly work on endangered species, special designation areas, water, vegetation treatments, economics, and custom and culture. So real briefly, you want to talk a little bit about, you talked about you would want to visit about customs and culture stuff just a little bit.
Yes. Yeah, that's one of the ones we share. And I think that's really important that we are able to share that with the Conservation District because we're here to go through how we can serve all our lands and all our resources for everybody to use and the culture that we have here in Rio Blanco County in that aspect. And a lot of it is important that what we have shared together and what's important to the citizens here with oil and gas, some of the things that we do share, how we use our lands, the recreation on our lands, BLM, how important water is to everybody in our county. And to be able to continue the customs and cultures that we've already developed to continue those, I think that's really important. And what I really find significant that we were able to update last year was the land use plan. And that helps ground all of that as well. And I think that's a good way to, and a good resource that we can always go to to see how our culture and our customs should be further transmitted. That's all I have on that one.
Yeah, I know you guys have got tons of volumes of stuff you have to read probably in your daily news as commissioners. But I don't know if you've had a chance to actually kind of go through the LUP document because it kind of, I think it's important to at least go through each, each one of these items to know kind of how the people of Rio Blanco County kind of put together this, you know, what went into this to come up with each one of these items that we take the lead on, the county takes the lead on, and how they're important and tied into the county and the communities.
How we're able to work together.
Yeah.
Well, I echo those kinds of statements. I mean, I know we put a lot of, I guess, effort.
That's what we live by.
I wasn't there on the first one, but I know on the second one, I spent hours of just going through and trying to, you know, present to you guys after, you know, and trying to just bridge the gap there between it because if you guys have a lot on your plate, we have a lot on our plate, but, you know, if we can work together and make it all work, I mean, that's what we're here to do, to help.
So for the sake of time, we have about 11 minutes. But is there anything specific that you want to see changed in the MOU?
I'd like to hear from you guys, what you're thinking, how you feel like, what are we doing, are we holding up our end of the bargain? Are we doing, are we working together like we should be? I'd like to hear kind of what you're thinking.
I wish Eddie was here. I haven't heard.
Thank you.
He might be listening, Ty. Will he be there, Eddie?
Maybe not.
I was texting every way I could, and he was one of them. He said, I can't get in. So he was not being able to get called in for some reason. So, yeah, I guess, I guess that's my concern, questions. I guess I should say if, I will just, you know, we, so forestry, livestock, and horses, I mean, that is where we spend a lot of our time. Water is also where we spend, I would say, the last two years, that's been a huge piece. And then under, while wildlife is under you guys', the endangered species is under the partnership piece. And don't get me wrong, when this says we take the lead, doesn't mean it's only the Conservation District or only the county. It's, we were trying to make it so we weren't double, yeah. Eddie working on wolves and I'm working on wolves, and we spend so much time. We were trying to divvy up time a little bit. Unfortunately, so I guess just, just as an example, because it's real recent and on our mind, I drafted wolf comments and submitted to the state with the most recent wolf comments and so forth. And I, while this does talk about, we want, we need to send them to each other for review, and we get together and we make sure that we're all on the same page. And I think that is absolutely critical. We need to be speaking with the same voice. And I'm not confident we're doing that right now because I know I'm not getting my comments to you until I'm ready to turn them in because it's always the last minute. Unfortunately, I haven't seen any comments from the county that's being submitted. I would like to do that because we don't know whether, what you're saying, and you don't know what we're saying until after I've said it.
And Eddie is on the phone, I think.
Great. So that's, that's the thing that I, I would like for us to improve upon. I don't know if we need to change anything in here, but maybe we do. Do you see anything in here that concerns you, the way it's worded, and that we will work together that way and so forth?
So when you, when you say that you don't feel like you've heard from the county on comments, and it's, what I'm hearing you say is this dialogue that needs to be going back and forth, and at this point, you don't feel like that is what is happening?
I think we've all let that slip.
Okay.
And I'm just as guilty because I'm always getting to the last minute before we get our comments in. So for instance, the new ones that are up on the 10J rule, I mean, those are not due until April, but that means we need to have them done in time to actually have a conversation with you and vice versa. And, and I will tell you, I can't carry that load 100%.
Right.
I need some help.
Yeah, it's got to be a two-way street.
It does.
Would you be willing to direct Eddie to, I mean, I think currently he's supposed to be working pretty closely with at least Cali, right?
He's got two jobs.
I mean, I don't, how that. You know, how the flow, the flow goes from, from the commissioners to Eddie to us? Or is it more directly us to directly the commissioners? Or, no, we need more interaction with Eddie, is kind of my feelings. And then I think we could get that flow going between us.
I would like to have a contact person. And I assume, and Eddie at times has been able to join us at our staff meetings and stuff, but I know he's been swamped lately and hasn't been able to do that. So just, yeah, I'd like to be talking more about these and have support and support somebody else.
If anyone watching the federal registers, I mean, I know by the time it gets to the federal register, it's fairly late in the game, but.
That's when the comments are, are open, is when it hits the federal register. I do not watch the federal register, but I have contacts enough that I'm pretty in the loop of when. I mean, because, because I work very closely with the Cattlemans, with the Farm Bureau, and with our neighboring counties. Our neighboring county guy, natural resource guys keep me right in the loop. And so that's who I'm, I'm pretty confident, most of that, I do, there are some things slipped by, but most of this stuff, if it's wolves, if it's sage grouse, right now, I'm pretty well up to speed because of the contacts. And it's strictly because of contacts. I'm not looking at the federal register. I'm, that's just not something that I can stop and do.
Well, maybe this is a conversation we just need to have with Eddie and, and figure out what his true workload is and, and figure out how to best mitigate where we're dropping the ball at.
Well, and it's on both sides.
Are you on the phone, Eddie?
Don't, don't forget, our emergency management, that's his other job, is we need him there. I need a full-time emergency manager. So if, please don't, don't forget that.
Oh dang, I didn't see he was sitting in the back of the room. I think you followed us down here, don't you?
No, but I think that's why we need to have that, that conversation with Eddie and, and see truly where his workload is and why things are slipping through the cracks. Is it, is it because he just doesn't know, or is it because he has too much on his plate? You know, some of that.
Probably that.
I think we need to proper go through it.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm concerned, is that Eddie just has so much on his plate that he is up to here. And, and I guess I would say, when I say I need help, there's always more, I mean, yes, if we can, if Eddie can, that would be great. But if we're going to carry more weight, we're going to have to hire somebody too. And we're going to have to have some support to do that. But I guess my thought, what I'd like to know though, how are you guys, are you guys comfortable and understand the value of that land use plan? I mean, I know that.
I've been preaching it.
Sorry.
Don't worry, it's happening to me too.
I mean, I just go back to, we had a land, our MLT, and BLM was basically saying for the Wolf Creek Reservoir, where roads could go and where roads couldn't go, and we're going to shut off access, and it's going to be walking only. And, and then Gary and, and Todd went to DC, and by the time that trickled back down to the state and then back to Kent Walters, it was a brand new, he drew lines wherever we wanted them because they didn't want us to have to go through that consistency review. And then knowing at that point, of course, there was a fairly conservative upper echelon there. And so, I mean, they drove that. And it was, it was amazing to see how that drove, how our land and natural resources plan drew.
And, and I think that that's a perfect example, and that we go along and nothing major is happening. But if we don't keep it up there at the forefront of everybody, so they know it's there, and they know it's important, and they know we mean what we say, then when it comes time for something like that, then it's a whole education process before we can make it happen. So I just want to keep it.
And make it happen. It was really fortunate that somebody had foresight to get that done in the way that we did for benefit.
Yeah.
Very instrumental.
It's pretty cool that it's, it's, and my apologies, I have hard copies that I planned to bring with you, to you guys this morning. And this morning just didn't go quite like it was supposed to.
We're supposed to be here on time, babe.
I was going to say, if you hadn't mentioned that, it'd be interesting for them to read through that, even at their leisure, because there's lots of history that goes way back when my great grandfather came here and kind of, you know, started in agriculture. So it, like I said earlier, it kind of broadens your perspective of what went into these bullets or these items that each of us take on responsibilities and doing in together.
Why we believe what we believe.
Yeah.
For our customs and cultures. Get review, continue. I will go back to what our initial plan with that was. I know we're out of time, but in '16, when this was planned, when this was finalized, the goal was between the commissioners and the districts, we were going to hire somebody, whether it was an attorney or some kind of a consulting group, to stay on top of all of this for us. That was about three months later when Renee walked in my office and said, you need to sit down because you're taking an 85% cut in your budget. That ended that conversation. So in, I mean, if, if it was the perfect world, we would have a consulting team that would stay on top of the federal register. I mean, that was the plan, federal register, staying on top of this, and then keeping us all informed, and we give them information, and they write the comments. That was the initial plan. Funding just went away.
Money, money, money.
With the history piece there.
Do you guys have the land use plan?
We'll get you a good, a pretty, a pretty copy.
We got, well, I've got it.
Okay.
And Google Drive as well.
Perfect. So any needs for changes that you see in the document itself, other than just updating the, I do think we definitely need to update so it doesn't say 2016.
Right, we've got the 2021.
Anything else that we need to, do we need to talk about it more before you finalize it and so forth? We can do that.
I think just for us to have a conversation with Eddie and see where he's at and make sure he's comfortable and there.
I mean, it is a huge, I mean, this part of it, I mean, staying on top of that little time I have had to, to come back and say, you know, we just, you know, did some comments not long ago, I can't remember when that was, and it was, the time period you have to go to figure out what needs to be in there and how you want to say it, and then make sure you're incorporating everything is important. The last MOU that we did for both the Greater Sage Grouse to be a cooperating agency and the one for the Wolf Creek Reservoir Project, I mean, there's some issues there that we could probably push back against, but, I mean, if we don't have those things documented, then really you have no seat at the table. I think Doug mentioned it, it's a good thing, it's like, this morning, in a conversation I had with him was, you know, it's kind of like putting the wolf in charge of the chicken coop. I mean, it's, you know, how, you've got to stay on top of that to make sure that you got your guard dogs in there, because otherwise it's like, oh, we know what we're doing, we'll take care of you.
Exactly. It is. And I will tell you, it means a lot to me to have your, the pieces and parts that you bring to it from time to time. It's like, okay, I don't know the legal stuff on this. Vicky always comes to my rescue, but I only do it through the direction of the attorney. I'm not that smart. A little paralegal brain, Dawn has the big brain. I don't care where you get my notes. Okay. Because we don't have that. So I'm certainly not, I'm always.
We will stay in communication. Let us definitely sit down and take.
Holler, Addison will come back another time and visit. My apologies, we were running behind. I'm just glad we got, thank you, Mark, for not going, I know. Because he couldn't, because he couldn't see nothing.
Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Alrighty.
Do we need to schedule something with Eddie?
Yeah.
We are moving on to, um, thanks to, um, Planning Commissioner Adair Norman to do the interview. Good morning.
So good on your scheduling here.
I like your haircut. Thanks for being prompt.
Thank you for being here. Um, so just to start off, give me a little bit of background. Thank you for being here. Um, so just to start off, give me a little bit of background, understanding of why you wanna continue, cause you're currently on the board um and continuing on with this board.
I've always felt that you needed to volunteer and be service to the community and uh planning commission, I guess, is where I'm at now.
How many years you been doing it?
My memory's not that good. So I got on there the year before we redid the L U R.
Two thousand sixteen.
So I think it was two twenty fifteen I got on.
Okay.
And you've been only Rangeley.
When I got on, there was uh Jim. Now, um.
One click. Tim one click.
Yeah, Tim one click and uh.
The lady up here.
One of my neighbors was on it and uh Logan Hill.
Oh, okay.
How do you feel about the way it's going? Is there, are you happy with the way it works? Do you wanna change something? Is there uh any issues?
No, I think that uh I've seen that you interviewed maybe uh Roger Polley, which would be helpful. I I don't really see that too much of an issue between or any issue between Rangeley and Meeker as far as that goes. So it'd be nice to have somebody else in Rangeley. I think that Leaf is doing an awesome job. I think he's been there the longest of anyone. So that always helps. But uh hey, it's going good. I guess if I had one thing and then isn't gonna fly, but is you guys should buy some cheap notepads and that's what should be used at the meetings like you're using your computer or something. So we don't have to do any paper. I mean, right now, if we get it by Google Drive, it's great. I mean, you can read it. I mean, that's better. But um, once once you get there, you don't have a reference to go to unless we print paper. And this thing on Mark's second would be an awful lot of paper. Or just say two hundred and forty pages or something. So. Maybe I know there's some cheap, I know there's some cheap pads out there that, you know.
That's something that you can do in the budget for that, isn't it?
Are you asking me? Uh, I I would then go ask Janine. Janine.
That's why she's. I got my note. I'll look into it.
And I T too. I think whoever's back here, we can, let's say it this way, we can darn sure look at that.
Yeah.
That's your direct answer.
Yeah, I would suggest you talk to the other members too. Some people are literate and some are not.
Well, on the fair board, that one weren't very good, but I'm pretty sure the group that we have there can handle that. But it would, I mean, you do need to talk to them, yeah.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
No, I really appreciate you putting the time in and contributing because there's a lot of people that do. We appreciate it.
Hey, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Give up the good work.
Thank you.
Alright.
Just a second.
Um, where are we at?
John Dorian or.
And Dorian, is she calling in, Dorian? I'm sorry, who?
Yes.
Dorian, are you on the phone? No. Okay, so I guess we are going on, can we?
Yep.
Can we skip to go to John Moffett and get?
Um, let me just check, cause I know that some of them, your Jamie Gliddwell only has a limited time when we get to hers. So let me just check.
We're going on race test. Is that what we're doing?
I'm gonna shoot an email to him real quick.
Kai is going on race test. We're gonna take a quick break.
There you go. Sorry, guys. Hello, who do we have on the phone?
Uh, this is Dorian.
Oh, hi, Dorian. Okay, let me get the board members right back. We'll be right on you.
Okay, sounds good.
It'll just be a moment, okay?
Oh, sure. No problem.
Thank you. Where are you? You're in Denver, aren't you?
I'm in Las Vegas, Nevada.
Oh, you're in Las Vegas. Okay. How's the weather out there?
Uh, for us, uh, cold and windy. For you, uh, warm and balmy.
Yeah, that that was true. We're having some pretty good blizzards right now.
Yeah, it's been crazy.
Okay, hang on one second.
Okey doke.
There you go. Okay.
Alright, Dorian.
Alrighty. Yes.
Thank you for joining us.
Oh, well, thank you for having me.
We are on to the Rangeley Lodging Tax Board um with Dorian. So um just give me a little bit of background of um of about yourself and and why you wanna be on this board.
Um, graduated from U N L V Hotel Administration about thirty years ago. Um, just had uh just a little bit of me business wise. I had a water sports company down in Mexico many years ago. Uh, came back here, um, bought property and uh was able to get into the mobile home and R V industry. Been in that for uh fifteen, twenty years and uh then purchased the uh Silver Sage R V Park up in Rangeley about a couple of years ago and just kind of fell in love with the town. Um, as as far as why I'd like to be on the tax board, I'd like to get, uh, I mean, even though I don't live there full time, I'd like to be a little more involved in uh in kind of what's happening in Rangeley. Um, I believe in the town. I think there's a lot of potential there. It's um, it's uh, it's one of the reasons why my wife and I bought the park up there, you know? That's basically it in a nutshell.
How long have you been on the board?
I have never been on the the tax board. Um, I received a, an email or a call and and was asked if I was, if I would be interested in participating on the Rangeley Tax Board. I said, sure, you know, but here again, like I said, I I don't live up there full time. I asked if that would be a, an issue, you know? And they said, well, why don't you just go in for an interview and we'll kind of hash it out from there.
Does, do you know um if the, how the bylaws read on this one, if they have to be?
I don't, I think it just says that they have to be part of the um.
Industry that.
Part of the industry, right. The local industry. So, yeah, um. For their bylaws, but.
How do, um, can you give me an overview of how you think that the tax board works and what it does?
Uh, from what I understand, it, um, obviously I, on my uh daily, I pay a tax uh to the city and that uh that money there accumulates. And then from what I understand, the tax board, you know, has a certain amount of money or whatever, and then they uh collectively decide where that money should go in order to best um um, uh, help the 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 uh, the business owners in the town of Rangeley.
Promote tourism.
Right, to promote tourism on a collective basis.
Right. Okay.
Is that pretty much sum it up?
That's my understanding. Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I don't have any other and thank you for your willingness to serve on this board.
Yeah, no, absolutely. It's an honor. I appreciate being um asked to come in for an interview. Um, can I just ask you um uh how, as far as uh um the money being portioned out? Um, how, wha- what are the, what are the avenues that you guys are looking into as far as uh um, for the advertisement of tourism for Rangeley? Where where are you thinking on putting that money?
That's, that's up to you. That's why you're on the board.
No, no, I'm just saying like right, right now, what where's, where's the thought process?
I don't think we have a thought process as a board of county commissioners. I think we've relied heavily on the um, on on those boards, specifically Meeker and Rangeley to to kind of direct that.
As well as.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I I think that you should reach out to the tourism industry around and get their input in in.
Yeah, I've uh, where I've seen the most, most success, I have a, I have a um a mobile home park in Arizona and it's on a back street. It's off Main Street and it's hard to not really hard to find, but it's just not out there, you know? And what I've done over the past fifteen, sixteen years is done uh Google AdWords, pay per click. And uh, so I may not be Main Street, so to speak physically, but um I'm definitely on the Main Street as far as um uh the web goes, you know? Um, and that's really, that's just absolutely changed my business one hundred and fifty percent, you know? So you may not drive by the park, but I guarantee if you go online and you put in, you know, uh, I'm in Apache Junction, Apache Junction, R V, mobile home, park, mo, any one of those keywords, I'm on the first page.
It's kind of taken the place of the Yellow Pages, haven't they?
Oh, hundred percent. Yeah. And what's really unique about the pay per click is that you can set your um, like, I'm the the, in the scheme of things, I'm a small player. I only have sixty-two spaces out there. There's places that have eight thousand, you know? But um, it's funny, I place higher than they do on the uh, on um, on the pay per click and stuff like that. Um, and that's, that's just, you know, as you guys know, that's the most important thing right now is the web. Like you said, it's just like the Yellow Pages. Nobody, you ask these young kids nowadays that are searching, they don't, they have no idea what you're talking about, right? It's like a rotary phone. They're, they're punching the numbers in the rotary. They don't know, just spin it. Right?
I like it.
Anyway, that's kind of what's worked for me and uh, you know, that's just an idea. But anyway.
Alright.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Um, we are actually, um, we have other interviews we need to do for this board. We have other applicants. So we will not be um assigning anybody to this board yet until our next.
Oh, yeah.
March fourteenth.
Yeah, no, no, that's, that's, yeah, I I I understand that. That's, that's, that's perfectly fine. I I I just appreciate the consideration. Thank you so much and have a wonderful day.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Bye bye.
Bye bye.
Alright, now we are moving on to Meeker uh Library Board, Regional Library Board, John Moffett. Thank you for being patient.
Of course. It's actually, you're right on time. So, good job.
We're trying.
Are you Vicki?
I'm Vicki.
Okay, great.
Nice to meet you.
Traded email. Nice to meet you, Vicki.
So um, just to start off, give me a little bit of your background and and why you wanna be on this board.
Okay, uh, background, um, I was uh served six years in the Marine Corps, active duty. You bet. I got out and went back to school and uh graduated from School of Mines, got married before that, right in there. Um, my wife and I have raised five kids. I've worked for, we raised our family on the front range. Um, combination of homeschool, public school, private school, we kind of, every year was something, what are we gonna do this year? And um, you know, so I've been in heavily involved in education of my own children for sure. And then um I'm active, have always been active, well, since I, really since we got married, I've always been active in my local church. I'm active now. Uh, that's, my faith is a strong part of my background and my um certainly my methodology for life, my practice in life. Um, I'm a, I'm a believer that men should be involved to, in these local boards and these local politics, um, and the local decisions. Um, but came across something many years ago about how local boards, local governance. But came across something many years ago about how local boards, local governance is so critical to the nation. And I've never, I've never actually been officially with any particular board organization, but I've always, I've always known, you know, that's something I need to do. And then, so over the past year, becoming more aware of, my wife is heavily involved in the homeschool group in Meker. So we became aware through various things, various choices, and the library is a big part of that. Homeschool group, and they call on that a lot. So I became aware of some choices that were made about books that were put in the library, which caused me to, you know, a bit of alarm. And so I want to be part of that decision-making of what, you know, what books we say are appropriate in our community. In a nutshell.
Bringing up controversy. If there's, because any board you're on, there can be controversy, right? I mean, and so if there is an issue that comes up and you're on this board, do you, would you tend to listen to the majority of what people are wanting in the community? Or are you going to base it solely on what you believe needs to happen with whatever controversy it is?
Well, I think both of those are true. My, so I'm going to act on my faith first. But certainly there's room to hear other opinions and to hear other ideas. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be, I realize especially on a library board, a public library board, you know, there's room for influence, probably not so much dogma. So I'd be sensitive to that, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to make a decision or agree with a decision that is against my faith. And as I understand it, I mean, everybody doesn't have to agree. I mean, there can be a dissenting opinion. There is on the Supreme Court on down, so I would assume, I mean, I know that that, there are dissenting opinions.
So I think, my opinion is, is like, most kids have these these days. And parents can set parental controls on there of what they can and can't look at or read or websites they can visit. For me, I think that holds true with the library. I think the parents should be responsible for what their children are or are not reading or books they're checking out. They need to be as involved in that as they see fit. And I think we've gotten so far away from the parents being held responsible. We're trying to coddle our kids in every little aspect of it. And I'm speaking as a parent myself, like, I'm going to give my boys enough rope to either climb it or hang themselves, and I'm going to give them directions. And yes, you can do that, or no, you can't look at that, or that's a bad website, or whatever the case may be. But if I'm going to be involved in what they're viewing on their computers or the phone, then I think that I would definitely want to be equally involved in what they're reading or checking out at the library. I think that's great. What's, how much have you been involved with the library board now? And what, is there things that you would want to change about the way they operate? Or just want to influence it? What's your plans for?
I have no plan. I don't have any agenda necessarily. I don't, I haven't been involved with the library board, other than attending a couple of the open meetings that have been available to the public that I knew about. You know, there, so there's, and I would not say that, you know, the library board's full of a lot of evil or bad people. I mean, I think there's some good people there, but I'd like to have a chance to be able to influence that for the, you know, as decisions come up and as rules are made, as directions are decided, I would like, I would like to see, I would like to see another Christian man on the board. It's predominantly all, you know, one gender, and which is, I think it should be a better mix. So that would, that's going to be one influence, it's just going to be automatic of, a man's going to look at it differently than a woman does, and I think that's needed. So that would be the, if there's any agenda item, that would be it.
All right. Should have been asking some of these other board members this too. We're very fortunate in Meker right now with the mill levies that we are collecting. How do you feel about returning some of that money, mill levy holidays, to money that isn't needed?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know the details enough to make any comment. I mean, if there's, certainly if there's, you know, I think, I think Meker, you're right. Meker is blessed with the library and with the rec center. I mean, it's amazing what it has for a small town. I don't know if there's any excess or not, but certainly if there's excess, you know, I'm also a businessman, work for National Sodas. I'm engineering and maintenance manager at National Sodas. That's part of the job of looking at, you know, what are we spending and how are we spending? And is that useful? Is that bringing value?
Yeah, well, it's, you know, in the next few years with the valuation and the taxes going up and all that kind of stuff, there's, I just think, feel real strongly that we need to watch our taxpayers and see if we can help them out anywhere.
I agree, and I think economy's going to get harder instead of better, so that needs to be a consideration as well. Probably don't have the opportunities we've had in the past for a while.
Thank you for putting your name in.
Yes.
Yeah.
And thank you for coming.
Of course.
We will be making, we will be assigning, this is one.
Making the appointment today.
Yes, we are making appointments. We have one that we had to wait on, so we will be making that decision today during our board meeting at eleven o'clock.
Okay. Well, my thanks to the board for hearing me out. And I pray you, you know, whether I'm elected or not, I know it's a big decision, so I'm glad you're doing it.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Vicki.
I will let you know.
Okay.
All right, so now we are moving on to another Meker Library Board, Carrie Greaser.
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 She should be on the...
Oh, sorry. I'm Jamie.
Yeah, Carrie should be on the...
Carrie, are you on the phone?
I am here.
Hi, Carrie.
Hi, good morning.
Okay, so I've got the commissioners for you.
Morning, Carrie.
Good morning.
Thank you for your time and your willingness to serve on this board.
Absolutely. I appreciate the opportunity to visit with you this morning.
Thank you. So just to give me a little bit of background and reason why you want to be on this board?
Okay, well, I'm a Meker native. I've lived here on and off for most of my life, for most of those forty-five years. I went to college and lived on the Front Range and taught there for a while. I teach fifth grade at Meker Elementary, and I've, this is my twenty-third year of being a teacher. I also have two children that are active in the Meker schools, and we use the library for a variety of things. And I just, I think it's an exciting time for the Meker library right now. I know they have, you know, there's some discussion in our community about that, but for me, when I look at the library, I can't help but think of the exciting things that they're doing right now. You know, not just for children, but for the community in general, and the information and literacy that they're sharing. I think, you know, it started a couple summers ago when I came to one of my kids' baseball games down at the baseball field, and there were just the coolest books that the staff had copied the pages of and put all along in the park. And I watched, not only my kids and myself, but lots of other, you know, community members walking around reading books at a baseball game. And I thought, this is just such a great idea. And I think that they have so many things going on right now, whether it's the escape rooms or the after-school clubs, the engagement with the community. And that's something that I would really love to support and add to and be able to advocate for, you know, in our community. So that is really my big interest in serving on the board, is how can we, how can I support them in that as they move forward?
Thank you. Do you guys have any questions?
What, you would be new to the board, correct?
I would be, yes.
Have you been to some of their meetings?
I have not, but I have visited with the board members about some things. And I've actually had a few community members come up and visit with me about the board meetings. I think that, for my understanding, is that for most of the time in the recent history, the library board meetings were fairly unattended, and it wasn't something that was drawing a lot of attention until it has the last year or so. So I haven't been to them, but I have heard about, you know, some of the conversations that are happening there and some of the decisions that the board members are currently being asked to make.
So is there anything in the, what the board's doing now or that you would do different? Or are you just planning on, want to be involved?
Well, I, you know, I don't come to the board with necessarily an agenda in mind about that. I will, I will say right now, you know, I'm not a person that necessarily believes in banning things, whether that is, you know, guns, books, fossil fuels, whatever it is. That's not really something that, I just don't think that that solves problems, and it doesn't really take, you know, a variety of perspectives into account. Having said that, I know that there's a lot of discussion in our community about some of the materials that are in our library or could be in our library in the future. And I think that, that, those are, you know, those are hard decisions. Those are challenging things for kids and our families and our community to discuss, but they're good conversations to have. You know, and that doesn't mean that we can't have those conversations about what is appropriate for our library? What is appropriate for our patrons of the library? What is appropriate for those different varieties of people? And how can we make those, you know, accessible to people that maybe are there specifically searching for them? But, you know, I certainly don't want my kids coming to the library and stumbling across something that they had no intention of finding. Having said that, I think that a lot of that falls on, you know, the adults and parents within our community to say, I don't necessarily want my child or my students to be out there looking for those things unsupervised anyways. So I think conversations about what's the library's mission, following back on their bylaws, talking about what's appropriate for purchasing, what's appropriate for placement, what are we putting out there? Those are good conversations for our board to keep having. And, you know, how can we listen to everybody and gain everyone's perspective? Because that's really when you have those good conversations, is when you're listening to people and looking at it from their point of view too. Because, you know, I know there's a lot of different feelings about that in our community.
I'm glad to hear that, because that was my next question was, what would you do if you had a bunch of public input? Would you consider that? How would you weigh that against your own feelings?
Well, I think, you know, as there is with any board, you have those bylaws and you have those, you know, those policies to lean back on. But I think that, you know, I've been in the school district long enough to know that the majority of conversations that board members hear don't happen at a meeting. They happen because somebody catches them at a ballgame or catches them at Watts. And visiting with, about those conversations, you know, in a variety of settings, although, of course, listening to people that are coming to a board member's or a board meeting to express their opinion. But, you know, the best thing that you can do when you're making a decision is to look at it from multiple perspectives. And you only get that by listening to people that maybe don't necessarily agree with your point of view or have a differing opinion, and then bringing all that together to make a decision, even if it doesn't necessarily match what your gut thinks.
Okay, the last thing that I have is, we're really fortunate to have the money that we have in Meker right now because of the mill levy and the oil fields and things. And that possibly will change, while it's going to change in near future, but our assessment is going to take, value of property is going to go up substantially this year, which means that our property taxes are going to go up. If the library board was collecting more money than you needed, would you consider giving them a holiday and giving some of that money back to the taxpayers for a short term?
I mean, I think that option is definitely on the table. I think that, you know, hard times are coming. And it's the job of all of our, all of our government and our, you know, governing agencies to have those conversations about what's best for people. I do know, though, that the Meker Library Board does take some of the funding that they have and provide it to other entities. For example, they give a lot of money to our school. They fund what part, I don't know the details on how much, but I do know that the Meker Library Board funds part of our library and position here. I know that they pay for some of the books that come to our library. So it's, I personally feel that it's, you know, very nice to see that they are using those monies in a way that I think is really responsible, by giving them to another entity to spend, you know, with discretion and making sure it follows their laws. But I think that looking for those kinds of solutions says to me that the board's already on that path. But I think that it's the job of any governing office or board to be mindful of the taxpayers' money. And if that means returning it, and that's what the board decided to do, that's certainly something that I would consider being beneficial.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. But one thing that the special district boards need to keep in mind is there, the money is being taxed for a certain purpose.
Right.
And that's where the money needs to be kept. I don't think that some of them are adhering to that as strict as they need to.
Right. And I, oh, yeah, go ahead. Yeah, okay.
Thank you. We will be appointing positions to this board today at eleven o'clock, so we'll be letting you know if you're appointed or not.
Okay. Well, I thank you for your time. I appreciate you considering me in this. And regardless of what your decision is, like I said, I think that the Meker library is headed in a good direction, so I can't wait to hear about that.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you, you as well. Bye-bye.
Bye. All righty, we are moving on to Rangeli Cemetery District Board, Jamie Gleibert.
Start careful, Joe.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. Thank you for being here.
I, so just to start off, give me a little bit of your background as well as why you want to be on this board?
I've been in Rangeli my whole life. I have two kids here, and my whole family pretty much lives here. My whole family's lived here my whole life. I'm interested in being on it because as being, with being here my whole life, I have a lot of family and friends who have been buried out there and continue, will continue to be. So I would like to be a part of just continuing to make sure that, you know, it stays a nice place and I can help give back my community.
Appreciate your time and interest in stepping up. We need that.
Something I really want to do, and I want to become a more active member of our, you know, in our state or town, so.
So you haven't been on this board before?
Never been on a board, honestly.
What do you know about the board? Have you been to some meetings? Do you know what...
So I haven't been to meetings, no, but I have been talking to my cousins. She's on a few boards, Melissa Nabowski. So she's the one who's actually been pointing me in the right direction to come here. And Rich Gardner has also been helping me come this direction as well. So I haven't, no, I haven't been to no board meetings, and honestly, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I'm a little volatile, but I'm really wanting to learn, willing to learn.
Any questions? Do you have any questions of us? Okay, well, thank you. We will be appointing this position today at our board meeting at eleven o'clock. Right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Good to meet you.
Is Kelly, Kelly, are you on the phone?
In twenty, she's, let me, I know she's working, so she was going to try and call in. Let me just shoot her a text real quick.
We'll go on a quick recess till we know if she's...
Yep, that would probably be perfect.
Kelly, are you there? Maybe not.
Hello?
Are you there, Kelly?
I am.
Perfect, thank you. So we are starting on back up with Rangeley Regional Library Board, Kelly Christian. So Kelly, can you just give us a little bit of understanding why you want to continue on this board?
Oh, sure. You know, I've always had a pretty vested interest in the library itself. Always been a lover of books and believer that we should have a library. I had to ask Amarette several years back, if you ever have an opening, please let me know. And so when an opening came available, she reached out to me and said, are you still interested? At which point I put in my initial application with the board and was initially interviewed. I think it's really important to give back to your community and this is a way that I can give back. I enjoy serving on the board, enjoy being involved in what's going on with our local public library.
Thank you.
Kelly, do you, are you familiar with how the board works? Have you been to the meetings? Is there anything that you feel needs changed or done better?
Within the library board?
Yes.
You know, I've been serving on it for about a year and a half now. So we do have our meetings the second Monday of every month and I've been attending those regularly. Amarette does a great job in presenting the material that we need. I feel like the communication is just excellent among the members of the board. We're able to communicate and we all seem to be on similar pages, so to speak, when it comes to how we want to, you know, help with, you know, the managing of the library, which I don't think any of us are micromanagers by any means. I just feel like Amarette does an excellent job and we're just there for some oversight and input.
Thank you. I've been in there. I think that's a beautiful facility and you guys do a good job at it. I thank you for your time.
Well, yes, you bet. I really do enjoy it.
Any questions?
The only question I have is if you're willing to serve on this board, are you willing to look at other boards, Kelly?
Well, that isn't really fair, is it, in an interview?
I got to ask.
That's gotta be tight, yeah. I, you know.
Go ahead.
Well, now, I, you know, my retirement plan is, but that's down the road just a minute or two. My retirement plan is to serve on additional boards because I know the need is out there and I know it's so great. But at this point in time, I think I've kind of reached my limit with one board.
Thank you for your time and willingness to serve on that board.
Yes, thank you, Kelly. We are going to be appointing this position today at our Board of County Commissioner meeting and at 11 o'clock, so we will let you know.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks, Kelly, for calling in. Appreciate it.
All right, you bet. Goodbye.
Bye. All right, do we have everybody here? Lisa, are you ready to get started? Okay, and Jeff's on the phone. Perfect.
And so you guys can, somebody can go ahead and come on this direction if you want. More better audio up here. Trent, is he going to do a presentation or anything?
I can forward it to you because we kind of were late not knowing who to send it to and everything, but this is like the.
Take your copy and then I can send it to Trevor. I can send it to you if you want.
Is your email, Trevor? So we are starting with Rangeley Dispatch, Lisa Parry.
Is there a copyer here? Maybe I can make a few more copies.
Oh, I've got more to the audience.
Okay.
Maybe give one to.
Run it back.
Did you get that, Trevor?
Don't wait.
Okay.
Jeff said he needs three minutes.
We're on time. We're doing well.
Well, I'll just give a little background. So initially Jeff contacted Ronnie, wherever she's back there. And I don't know because Ronnie's probably most knowledgeable about the system and it might be easier for her to come up when Jeff is presenting too. But and just asked if we could get quotes for the CAD and RMS and the phones as well under the county's licensing to just see what the cost would be. And so that's what we did. And then we're just trying to move forward and look at grants and everything. And so that's when we contacted Ronnie again and had a conversation with both Anthony and Ronnie about possibly coming under the county's license for those systems. And like I said, I'd kind of like if, once Jeff gets on here, for him to kind of go through the actual, the steps of, you know, us getting that so that we all make sure that we agree with Ronnie and Anthony about if there would be any additional costs to the county for us doing that and what would happen at our dispatch and what might impact theirs. And like I said, Ronnie and Anthony might have more information about that. I didn't know if there was anything.
I think also if we can include our IT in this discussion because Trevor sent us an email this morning that there are some other associated costs.
Which, like I said, and Trevor wasn't part of that conversation and I haven't seen that, so I don't have any clue what those are, so.
Yeah, they're about 20 minutes ago.
He said 60 seconds.
While we're waiting, could I get one of your credit cards and the keys to the car? Because I'll have to go get the.
I love how they just reach for their credit card.
No, I'll bring it for the key. For the key.
Keys and credit card. Thanks, guys.
We got you, Jim.
Just in case.
We're here for you. What are you going to contribute to this?
Well, I maxed out my credit card.
You turn, take it.
Deenah, what?
I started using my own personal credit card. Let me know when you go on another trip because we'll just bump it. And then for that month, you'll be good.
I'm going to go on a trip and I need my credit card out, Janay.
Can I get it bumped? That was like, yeah. And it was fine. It was fine.
So do you ask where they're going, Janay?
What?
Do you ask where they're going on it?
Um, usually I haven't filled out some papers. No, kidding.
He's on the phone.
See, it is, oh, he's left the meeting. He was in there and then he said he left.
Radio equipment in 2019? Was there equipment purchased during that time for that? Is that what that question marked?
Yes.
Aha. Is that you, Jeff?
Yes, can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Sorry, I apologize. Had some connectivity issues apparently.
Hey Jeff, this is Lisa. Could you just kind of walk through the whole process of kind of how we came to get these quotes? And then just your perspective and what Central Square kind of indicated to us about the cost to the county? And obviously Trevor has some costs that he's going to present. But I'm not, I don't know what those are, so.
Yeah, so thanks, everybody, for your time. I apologize. I needed a few extra minutes there. So there's two distinct systems here that we're discussing. And I want to keep them separate because they both have different impacts or challenges. So one is the ProSuite CAD RMS platform, which is essentially the data management side of things, which previous to Rio Blanco switching to Central Square, both entities used a different program. And then most recently, Rio Blanco over the last few years migrated, but Rangeley did not. And now they're looking to do that. So if we start with the ProSuite CAD RMS data platform, the initial conversation that I had with Ronnie about Rangeley joining. Hold on, I'm sorry.
Did we lose you?
Walked away.
Must have had his dog in or something.
No, I apologize. There's a radio going crazy in the background. So the original conversation that I had with Ronnie about joining the ProSuite platform was essentially us going out, working directly with Central Square, who's the vendor, and trying to come up with a no-cost way to add on to the existing platform that the county has. So the quotes that we obtained for Rangeley were for them to join the existing platform, server platform that Rio Blanco has with essentially them paying their own way. So it has them paying the initial upfront costs for licensing and also has them paying the ongoing annual expenses to continue to utilize that system. That proposal that we have or that number that we have should cause zero increase in cost to Rio Blanco County. In fact, Central Square says it will cost nothing for Rangeley to join. Essentially, they would just be connecting remotely via whatever VPN solution is in place to be able to access that system. It doesn't need a dedicated fiber connection of any specific sorts, but it would be them essentially paying their own way to join that existing data management platform. The other system is the 911 phone system, which is what we started with, with this entire component. So with the 911 phone system, there is certainly some synergies and advantage to Rangeley's dispatch center sharing a phone system with Rio Blanco counties, which is a very similar thing that's done in other areas of the state. So Aspen and Vail share a phone system. Garfield and Mesa County share a phone system where they have the ability to essentially more fall back on each other. So the quote that we received for the 911 phone system, there's two different variations of it. One is them adding some 911 phone positions to the existing Rio Blanco system. It would not reflect any sort of increase in cost to Rio Blanco again. The only cost that potentially would be there would be fiber connectivity from Rangeley to Rio Blanco. And I think Trevor could speak to that better. There's already connectivity between the two sides, but there need to be some additional connectivity for the 911 phone systems. In terms of them joining the 911 phone system, there actually be a cost savings to Rio Blanco County. And what I mean by that is right now, Rio Blanco pays for the maintenance support of two servers. It was a primary and a backup or redundant server. And one of the things that we discussed for Rio Blanco, potentially if they were interested, is that Central Square suggests geo-diversifying the two servers, which we've been told are currently now both in Meeker and putting one server in Rio Blanco, uh, Rangelie, one server over in Meeker, having geo-diversity. And if something like that were to happen, potentially we could take one of the two servers right now that Rio Blanco is paying for the maintenance and upkeep on and put that underneath Rangelie's contract, where essentially they would be reducing the Rio Blanco annual ongoing expense and helping kind of incur and carry some additional expense. So there's the two different platforms. One is the data ProSuite CAD RSs. And then the other is the 911s. Does that make sense, Lisa? Is that what you were hoping I was going to share?
Yeah. And then it's Trevor, Ronnie. Come and talk about if there's talk of differences in that. Well, he's on the phone preferably. So. Anthony, whomever.
Anything else?
I just wanted to get to this part while Jeff was on there.
So there's a lot of background in this that's not being brought up. And what has gone on in the past? That in 2019, we started researching, upgrading our 911 system. The reason being because we knew Next Gen was coming down the line and what it would take to be a Next Gen compliant. We started that in 2019. In 2020, Mike Cook, God rest his soul, put on a presentation, a slideshow presentation. And I'm sure it managed to back there. I believe you were at that. And we presented all this, what was going to happen in the future with Next Gen coming down. And we still have that slide presentation if you'd like to see it. But basically, what what happened after that meeting? Rangelie accused us of trying to take over their dispatch there, which was absolutely false.
Can I say something before you find? This has nothing to do with the history and I'll address that. But I don't want to get into history that I'm hoping we're moving past, Anthony.
No, no, this has absolutely everything to do with it because of what all the work that these people have put into this.
Which is fine, but I don't want to make any more accusations. Let's just talk about moving forward.
I'm going to lay facts down because how can they make a decision? There's not facts involved.
Hey Jeff, can you mute while you're not talking? We're getting a little bit of feedback. Thank you.
So in 2013, we had, we went to E-Force. Both Meeker PD, Rangelie PD and us all went to E-Force. I was not associated with the sheriff's office at that time. But and that was a system that we could all share information back and forth. But in May of 2022, May 20th, to be exact, E-Force, well, actually before May 20th, 2022, E-Force did an upgrade, which now each entity had to go back in and reset those those switches to allow the sharing of the information. On May 20th, 2022, Ty Hamlin chose not to share this information with us. But we no longer were able to share information. In 2020, we decided to upgrade and we got the new 911 phone system. And that was through Central Square. The 911 board, the Eastern 911 board paid for that and we upgraded that. We continued to research the CAD and RMS system and we decided to go with Central Square. In November of '21, we signed that contract with Central Square. And we had been keeping Rangelie updated on all of these. And we had gone to Rangelie and said, are you, do you want to come aboard? And they said, no. And that was in July of '22. We met with the town and you said that at that time you were not able able to come aboard. So it's not like that we haven't been doing this in the blind. We have been letting them know from the start of what needed to happen to bring 911 up to speed for the citizens of this county. And we have done an amazing job. And it has taken, once we got, signed the contract with Central Square, it took us over nine months of man-hours to set that system up on the backs of these people that are sitting here in this room along with Meeker PD. And I am not going to discount their work involved in this. You want to jump onto this system at no cost? It's like, no, there's.
So stop there. I never said that. You quoted me something and I said, I need more information. And that's all that was said, Anthony. So don't accuse me of something that I didn't say. I did not say we're not going to do that. I went out to Janay and asked for more information and that's it.
You wanted information on the jail. What does the jail got to do with?
I wanted to know how the funds were spent.
So I can understand what was involved in the setup. What did you do to all these man-hours? What is involved?
So you have to build the system to fit your agency. So we had to go in and we had to put everything in there that would be law enforcement for Rio Blanco Meeker Police Department. So then once we build, then it can be a default pretty much. And then people can just come off of that. And also there was an update in the CRS codes back in March, I believe it was. And because there's no primary agency in Colorado, we had to go in and we had to physically update all those CRS codes. And there were many, many hours spent doing that along with the neighbors code.
And that's fine. So Jeff, just clarify this for me. Will we just migrate to that or will we have to do that work as well?
So I think we need to break this up again. There's two distinct systems, right? So the 911 system, any work that Rio Blanco previously did in configuring your 911 consoles isn't relevant to Rangelie. They would be responsible for doing their own configuration piece. So there isn't.
Man-hours we're talking about.
Definitely, yeah.
Right.
We're talking about just the ProSuite right now.
They're talking about Pro.
I know. I just, I'm just sharing so the commissioners understand that there's two pieces, right? The 911 piece, the time that you put in isn't relevant to Rangelie joining the system. The ProSuite CAD RMS time in building out your configuration is relevant. You've put time in there. However, the CRS codes, the current CRS codes are available from Central Square if Rangelie were to buy that today. So if Rangelie.
We did that, Jeff. I'm sorry, not to interrupt you, but I don't believe you worked for Central Square. So if we had Central Square on the line, they could vouch that we had to do it for Colorado. Their main agency that used to do that, which they call a lead agency, did not update those. So we had to go in and update them.
Sure. I'm not, guys, I'm not saying that you didn't. What I'm saying today is if Rangelie went on their own and contracted directly with Central Square for ProSuite, they would be able to get those. I'm not here discounting that you guys didn't put in the work. I think we all know with all of these programs, some agency somewhere does that. And I'm not saying that there isn't value in that. So I'm not trying to discount that. What I'm sharing is if we, being Rangelie, did not partner with Rio Blanco on using ProSuite and just went directly to them, those are available through Central Square. And I do understand that you guys were the ones that built those into the system for everybody in the state.
Okay, go on.
Oh, cool.
No, I, this isn't controversial on my part. I don't discount anything you're saying. At the time you guys were doing it, I couldn't afford to do it. And that's just the flat fact of the matter. And I don't want to bring any previous politics into it. We're trying to move forward and hopefully be compatible with Rio Blanco County's dispatch. So and I haven't said any disparaging remarks to anyone. So.
I haven't said any discouraging.
So no, but you're making.
So what, so you, you mentioned earlier that you didn't say something. So what, what, what was your response? I mean, what can you guys bring to the table in helping? I mean, if we did consider this, like what, what can the town bring to the table?
Well, what do you, I mean, Jeff, I need to know what the costs are that you guys want because that's a better place to start. I'm not just going to throw something out there. What is it that Rio Blanco feels is a fair amount to come onto the system? I mean, I, I get. I think there are a lot.
I also think we need to know what the continuing cost that the email that you just sent us this morning as well, because there's a lot of additional things that are not being taken into consideration from the IT.
We're not even talking 911 yet. This is all CAD RMS.
So that we tried, we tried to capture the ongoing cost. So that's the proposal that you have in front of you is all of the ongoing expenses, the licensing for Rangelie to add on to the Rio Blanco system are incurred by them in cover. There is no other ongoing expenses other than potentially VPN access into the system if you guys charge for that. But it's not, doesn't even for the, for the ProSuite CAD RMS side, it does not even need a dedicated connection. They just, Rangelie goes to the internet and can get back into it, no different than your folks to get into it via their mobile terminals when they're out driving around.
Based on our experience with E-Force and the breakup of that system, before I go further with any of the numbers, I would like to recommend that we not just use the same system or put backup servers in Rangelie. Because the E-Force separation, system separation has actually been ongoing until like two or three weeks ago. And so that's been quite a painful process. I'd recommend that we keep separate systems, even if we both use the same, keep separate tenants within the system. So that when we, when it comes time to change, if we decide to change and you, and Rangelie doesn't, that doesn't become another year-long.
And that was just the proposal from them.
That's just to start out. I would recommend that if we move with one of those options. Something that I think that everyone should be aware of is that we do have that layer two circuit. And Jeff, you're aware of this, between Meeker and Rangelie so that Rangelie Dispatch can access that 800 megahertz DTR radio system. This is separate from Central Square and all that. But just, just so everyone's aware of all the costs. That circuit between Meeker and Rangelie costs the county on a 20-year IRU. It costs us about $2,000 a month, if we take a little bit. We don't charge for that currently. We don't charge Rangelie for that service. And we use it for broadband. We use it for internal county stuff. And we use it for links like this, for Rangelie Dispatch at Inner DTR, for the Meeker and Rangelie School District to, you know, share phone servers and information and things like that.
Multiple use.
Multiple use. Those multiple uses have hit the edge of our capacity for that link. We had a four-channel service running on that. We've hit that edge of that with the, with the broadband, the county's internal services, Rangelie Dispatch and Rangelie School District or Rangelie and Meeker School District, right? And so we need to, in order to continue our actual, this year's Core Switch upgrade for our internal county services, I want to upgrade that to two for the internal county system and two for the broadband system so that we have more, more throughput, more bandwidth and more channel availability and more failover if an optic fails or something, right? So I want to upgrade. So we're actually already in the process of upgrading that from four channels to 40 channels. That upgrade. I don't know if I put that in here. It's going to be, it's around 17,000. To keep that in your brain. So we're upgrading for four channels to 40. That's a $17,000 part of our Core Switch upgrade. Okay?
What's the monthly?
It's, we will on it once we do that.
And Trevor, that's, that upgrade though, just to be clear, the piece that Rangelie Dispatch is using is a very small piece. I get it that it all is in the pot that fills it up, but it's a pretty small piece. And you're talking about school district and all the other county functions.
Right now it's one of four.
Right.
And it'll probably become one of like eight pretty soon here. The circuit that, that circuit, the layer two circuit that we run from Rangelie Town Hall to Lobo Mountain over in Meeker, we don't charge for that. That would, most, most broadband companies typically charge around $800 a month for that type of service. It's called a wave service. And we actually purchased the optics for that to make that work. And that was about $500 one time back in a year or two ago. There's also some space in our racks and our data center that, again, that if we were, we were a normal broadband company charging people for things, it would be, it would be about $200 a month plus the rate of power, so 11 cents a kilowatt hour, right?
Hey Trevor, quick question for you. Is it a common practice with Rio Blanco to charge them, other municipalities within their county for these services? I just ask because I work in a lot of different counties around Colorado and I've yet to find any counties that charge the cities and towns to use quote unquote county broadband infrastructure. So you guys do that with Meeker, you charge them and that's like a Rio Blanco thing?
Yeah, we actually do charge for some services. We try to give as good a deal as we can to many anchor institutions because, you know, that's where our taxpayers are paying money into and things like that. But at the same time, they are using those services and a really good example is our firewall. Town of Meeker pays us a good chunk of money for that. The school district pays a good chunk of money for that. Our storage system in Meeker, the Pioneer Hospital shares, shares some of that. They pay a pretty good chunk of money annually for that. I don't remember those numbers. But one thing to keep in mind too is we would have to, we would have to build out a VPN if we do some kind of remote access into our existing Central Square system on our firewall. And there would be a cost involved with that, probably around an $8,000 professional services fee. Unless I have time.
How does?
And that would be on.
How does Meeker access it now? They do it via. How does Meeker access Central Square now?
That firewall access that they pay for, forgive me, I don't remember that number, but that gives them access into that system. And that's, it actually, I do have that number. It's 1,500 annually.
1,500, you said?
Yeah, I believe so. Janay, that might be, I think that's what it is. But I'll let.
Okay, so VPN access would, is 1,500 for Meeker and I think Rangelie similarly sized, right?
Right.
And I don't disagree that that cost would be an appropriate cost for them to pay on top of them essentially paying their own licensing to utilize the system.
2,000. I think that helps. So that, hopefully that helps paint a picture for, that's all I can think of at the moment. Might be more.
Again, we have, we have tried to keep Rangelie involved, but this thing from the get-go, they're from 2019. And until February 1st, this was the first time, February 1st, that they came and said, hey, we want a meeting. We had a meeting. I gave them three options. Obviously, they did not like those options and started.
I wanted to, no, I didn't start calling anybody. I just asked for numbers of how that was justified, Anthony. I need to see the backup if you're going to ask for that huge of an amount. And that's all I asked. I didn't call any of the county commissioners. I just wanted them to know I was asking Janay for.
I'm sorry, I used the wrong term, email.
So I think there's the two components here, just to go back to that. One is ProSuite CAD RMS and the other is 911. So the 911 piece, I don't disagree with Trevor, would need some service via the. some service via the wave, right, Trevor, which you guys are in the process of upgrading. So I think potentially there could be if, if everybody's amenable to going that route, there could be some cost sharing on that upgrade piece. The ProSuite CAD RMS piece doesn't utilize that connection. They would just use their normal internet and get in via VPN, which has the firewall expense likely similar to Meker with it being a similar number of users with those, right? So we've got the two different pieces and Sheriff, just to correct you on one thing, this didn't start February 1st. Ronnie and I have emails going back last year where we were discussing this. Um, it's just taking time to work through this.
Actually, I don't have any emails from you except for the fact that you did call me and you said that you were working with Rangeley and that you were, um, looking into systems for them at that time. And I let you know what we were using and I forwarded the contact to Central Square. That was our conversation. And then I don't have any emails after that from you.
And also Jeff, you told us at that last meeting that, uh, you would be using the servers for CAD RMS that we currently have. Correct?
The ProSuite servers.
Yeah, there's, there's two, there's two options. One would be to join your CAD RMS platform for the data sharing. The other would be Rangeley being off completely on their own system.
Which is what Trevor recommends.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We went through with eForce.
Which is fine.
I mean, if you guys don't want to share CAD RMS, then we can move on from, from that discussion, but there's no such thing as having two separate databases that are linked together. It's either you have that sharing or you don't. That's up to you guys.
All I can say is I can tell what kind of fruit the tree bears, right? By what happens. And we had a sharing system and Ty Hamlin chose to turn it off. So how do we know going forward that that's not going to happen again?
Yeah, I think there has to be some level of commitment that you guys want that value of sharing and that you're willing to move forward together on that. That's the political piece that isn't my, my piece.
And just, just kind of a little touch on the nine one one system as well and the GI diverse system. That's the point of E911 and NG911 is that it is a GI geodiverse system. So, um, regardless if it's the same system or not, as long as it's updated, um, and the phone system is up current, then every, and it's all compliant, then it should all be geodiverse, no matter what, no matter what system you're using. So even if you use Motorola, we use Central Square, it's all going to be geodiverse. That's the whole point in the NG911 and the E911 system is so that like if I go down, it automatically picks up and sends immediately to, um, the next.
And I don't think so. We were debating that, Ronnie.
Okay. Well, GI, geodiverse is just a big topic, so.
It was more on the.
It's a sales gimmick.
It was more on the ProSuite that I think that that was the discussion about the server. So and correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff.
Uh, no, I mean, I respectfully disagree. You can have geodiversity in terms of losing your nine one one trucks, but you can also have GI diversity with your actual nine one one equipment, which currently today, right, all resides in the same town. And you can create geodiversity between your primary and your redundant servers.
And we did talk to our, uh, nine one one providers specifically about this. And the cost in doing that is great.
And they don't recommend it.
Exactly.
Well, we do, we do it in many counties around Colorado.
So for the, the sake of time, because we're coming up on our Board of County Commissioner meeting, I think we need to have another meeting. I think we need to, to.
So are we going to do it after? I mean, that's what.
We already have, we've already got other meetings set up for after as well.
I indicated that I didn't think a half hour would be enough, so.
Unfortunately, their, their schedule, they've got a ton of stuff going on this afternoon too. Um, but that's why I'm wondering if maybe we still need to get some information. It sounds like going first.
I just want to know, I mean, Anthony, you can tell the cost because I don't think everybody here knows exactly what you.
I, I gave them three options in the email. And if you'd like, I could produce that email. Option one was that we allow you to, to come into our system to share the information, but you have a standalone system all in there. The second one is you come in under our licenses, use our servers and there's going to be an upfront cost of 150,000.
Can we stop a minute? Cause I just, all we're asking is to come under your licensing. So.
I'm telling you what I gave you.
I know, but was, is the first option come under your licensing?
No.
Okay.
No, that you're standalone, you're doing.
Because we can kind of still do that coming under your licensing and have our own server.
And then the second option was come in under our license um, and use our servers. There'd be a $150,000 upfront cost plus $48,000 of monthly or annual maintenance to cover all of the costs that, that Trevor and um, Central Square would charge for that. And then the third option I offered is that if you want us to dispatch for you, that we would bring you on to Central Square for the CAD and, or not the CAD, but for the RMS. And that would basically cost nothing, but that you would, um, pay the same rates as the town of Meker and the Meker Fire District.
So why can't we still come under your license and still have our own server? Why wouldn't that be an option? Because that's the, there is an.
No, it doesn't work. It doesn't work that way. It, the license. Yeah. So Sheriff, can you break down the costs of the 150 and 48,000 a year? Cause we essentially have the annual cost.
Yes, I need to, to, okay, we, we actually need to move on to our Board of County Commissioner meeting. So I think we need to continue this conversation and set up another meeting um, and come together so that.
Get the breakdown of those costs ahead of time.
So could you, Jeff, could you send us an email with what question you were just getting ready to ask? Send all of us an email so that we can know what you're specifically looking for.
Yes, I will.
And it's not just him, it's me, because that's why I emailed Janay. I'm just trying to justify those costs.
Perfect. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if you. Thank you. And Ms. Vicki will get with you to set up another meeting.
Yeah, I think once you guys have the written information on everything, then maybe you can process that. You know, go through that at your leisure and try and process all those different sides.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, y'all don't have to leave. We've got more to talk about.
This is the high.